Mike, so, welcome.[1.56][1.56][applause] And Mark, you're back there, too, I'm sorry.[6.75][6.75][laughter] And I did, I just would like to say, to thank Mike, I'm having him sit up here tonight because he's graciously providing two presentations to the committee and to the community tonight. So instead of him being up and down, we thought this would make the most sense. Okay?
So, I just wanted to say a few words before Mike started. I've had the opportunity along with Kip to meet with Mike a little bit about the superintendent evaluation, the new superintendent evaluation. And as I was learning about it, I was struck by the similarity between our process last year and the process, the new state process this year. But as I began to choose my elements, and, which I thought was really hard to do, and I wish we could have chosen 10 instead of 2, I realized what the major difference is. Last year, our process really focused on the individual, and sort of a deficit model, what's missing, whereas this year, I really see this as an opportunity for the school committee to prioritize elements or structures, well, elements and structures ultimately, about what is most important to us, what do we want to see the superintendent focus on in terms of moving the district forward? What are our goals? And how would we like to see the superintendent and administrators align with district goals in pushing things forward? So that we can help focus, focus the off, so focus our educational leader. So that was a really helpful frame for me, and so as you listen to Mike, I think it's a really helpful frame to listen to him. So, without further ado, Mike.
So, I'm gonna, the clicker's behind you, it's not that I'm pointing at Kip, I just realized that my angle's gonna look a little funny.
Turn to you off anytime you want.[158.56][158.56][laughter]
So, I want to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity, and what's interesting and feels different, just to follow up on Catherine's theme, this year as compared to last year, is that this is a very consistent system for what all educators in the Amherst Public Schools have going on. So, for instance, we're gonna go through a five-step cycle, it's all my identical, word for word, at least in theory, as what teachers have, what principals have, and what the superintendent has. So last year, the wrinkle was, it was really looking at the superintendent at first, but really, this is, this is a direct connection. And as I've been in different schools, presenting and supporting people around the educator evaluation system for teachers, I've been very explicit to say, and it's similar for principals in your room and for superintendents. Oh, it's me. So, objectives for tonight, so two for this part. One is to understand the evaluation system, right? The school members, and really, my job is to help support the process, right? The school members, you're gonna be evaluating superintendents yearly, and I want to make sure that everyone gets a sense of their roles and responsibilities. And then, there were some results that Debbie Gould sent from some work around prioritizing elements, and to give opportu, as Kip and Catherine were saying, give everyone an opportunity to comment on those elements, really, and we'll get into that in a little bit, but those would be the two objectives for this. So here's the five-step cycle, and again, it's almost identical for every educator working in the Amherst Public Schools, and we'll go through each step. There's kind of two big things to this, one is the five-step cycle, one is the standard document that you look through and offer feedback on. So we'll start with the self-assessment. So, really, what is happening with the self-assessment is the superintendent, and this is, you know, I use the superintendent language specifically, because this isn't about Maria, this is about every superintendent in Massachusetts. Like, if I was in another district, I could be doing the same presentation. So, there's some self-assessment that kickstarts the process. So, looks at the superintendent rubric, student achievement results, which we'll take a look at later, progress and goals from last year, prior evaluations. And this is all gonna be seen and presented to you on October 9th, that's the structure here, in terms of district improvement plan. That's gonna be kind of the full explanation of the self-assessment, where we are, where we need to be. And steps one and two go back and forth, and that's true, and the teacher one as well. So tonight's work is that you'll share feedback on the most important elements of the rubric, and it's really around moving the district forward. So when you looked at that rubric, those were the, what's considered best practices for superintendents across our state and across the country, really. And it's to say, we can't focus on everything at once, all, you know, we couldn't focus on everything all the time. So with your knowledge of the Amherst Public, and Public Schools and Amherst Regional Public Schools, what are, what are the things we need to do, what are the things we need to focus on as a district to move forward? Because this district improvement plan, the school improvement plans, and the teacher goals, there's a through line between those. So it's highly important work, not just for the superintendent evaluation document, but actually, the whole system really drives that work forward outside this room, when teachers are writing goals and getting feedback from their evaluators. So superintendent creates one professional practice goal, that's directly tied to the conversation, you know, the work that you all did, and conversation you'll have, one student learning goal, that'll mostly come from results of multiple assessments and data, two to four goals from the district improvement plan which will be presented, and there'll be key actions, timelines, and benchmarks for each goal. So, right, you're gonna give some feedback tonight, October 9th, you get presentation of district improvement plan, self-assessment, and then October 23rd is the time that this group will have the formal presentation of the superintendent's plan, and, for discussion, and then to vote, because that is a dynamic process. So step three is implementation, it's kind of, the evaluators and the valuetees' responsibilities to ensure that what folks say is gonna happen actually happens, the plan actually is followed through on. And there's also a piece around artifacts. In the superintendent's case, that's often the things that you see when you come to school committee meetings, like reports that are made here, observations, superintendent in action, at these kind of meetings, at community events, budget presentations and reports, communication out from the superintendent. Those are the types of things that you're looking for in terms of artifacts. So it looks a little different for the teacher, where people are going in to observe, but the reality is, we're all observing all the time, and trying to take all that in and use that as an, as a tool to help in the process. So this feels a little different than some past years, and it's true for the teachers as well, is that halfway through the year, the superintendent presents mid-cycle goals progress reports, so they update the school committee on, here's what I said, here's what I said we were gonna do, here's where we are roughly halfway through, and here's what's planned for the rest of the year. So for this group, the determination was that would happen on January 22nd. And organization of that is, the superintendent presents that information, and the school committee offers feedback. There's no forms to fill out from the school committee perspective, but there is an expectation of responding to the school committee, the superintendent's presentation. And the last step, when you get to the summit of evaluation, there's this kind of a multi-layered thing, I want to be explicit about all parts of it. So the superintendent prepares and submits, by May 28th is the agreement here, an end-of-cycle progress report. So it's an assessment of goals, performance on each of the standards, so we're looking, the goals come from those high priority ones, but all educators are responsible for the full document. And impact on student learning with evidence supporting the assessment, right? So that all comes to you, May 28th, that initiates this end-of-cycle process. Then each school committee member presents an individual end-of-cycle summative evaluation report. In other words, each of you fills out a summary evaluation on the superintendent. I want to be clear with this group that that is open to other, that individuals is open to, is, open meeting law can have access to individuals' reports. You know, I know there was some lack of clarity in some districts last year around that, but it's not just the summary compilation, it's individuals are open to, open meeting law.
Just 'cause there's been no clarity? Who, was it DES, you decided that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, exactly. And at that point, the school committee chair or whoever their school committee chair appoints, drafts an end-of-cycle summary, summative evaluation report, takes in all those things, tries to make a summary, aggregates lots of information, and presents it, and the school committee discusses and presents that on June 25th, and then has to adopt that that summary document is a fair assessment of the whole group. So here's a summary of the timeline, I'm sorry, I know the font's small for folks like where Michael's sitting, but I thought it'd be helpful to have it chronological as well. And Debbie has this, so if folks want a copy of it, we can get that to them. And then, just, and this is gonna be really tiny, so I'll just speak to it a little bit, I didn't realize how tiny.
Here's that.
Yeah, but I've seen this many times. So, this is the same one from the teacher one, but essentially, there's four rating categories, I just want folks to know about that. Exemplary, exemplary is a really high mark. So exemplary is what we feel like is a model that other people should come and watch. So we think about that term as it relates to teachers, it's the teacher that, when you have guests, you're all like, this person, watch this person differentiate the curriculum. That's, it's a really high bar, right? At a state level, they're saying summatively, you know, the final rating category, 10% of educators should be at exemplary. Proficient is a really high bar, that means you're meeting the standards of, you're meeting the standards laid out in that rubric. Needs improvement is developing, so it means that some things are really strong, there's still some areas for work on, and it's, you know, often when someone's new in the role, we expect there to be some needs improvements, you know, in some of the categories, and then there's unsatisfactory. As, we could go over that, you know, another time in more detail, but I just want at least people have that. Yeah?
And last year, we did use these ratings when we did the evaluation, those of us who were involved last year, and we did use the standards, so we have some experience with this information already.
I think that's pretty much the end, the next slide is just the summary of the data.
Michael, one thing, if you could add, not just for the benefit of the committee, but also for the public out there, if you could comment on standards, indicator, and elements, and the relationship between the three, please?
Sure. So, standards is, so if you look, if you want to look on in the agenda, or in the things I sent over, I think sometimes it's a little help. I'm just trying to keep it within Kip's time limit, so, so I'm on a page that looks like this, it looks superintendent at a glance.
Mm-hmm.
And so, much like the teacher and principal rubric, there's four standards. So you see there's instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. These are really large, key topics that help frame our work, they're not necessarily things you can comment on specifically, like, it'd be hard to say, yeah, that person has really good instructional leadership, that's why they broke it down into smaller levels. So you see, under each standard, there are multiple indicators, I think between four and six indicators per standard. Those are the ones that are in bold, and they're, in the organization of this, they have a letter next to them. Within each indicator are the elements, those are the ones that have numbers next to them, and they're not in bold. That's the place where we can start talking about what we see. That's the more observable criteria that really should help drive this process. And within each of those, what's on the pages behind it are descriptors that, they didn't want to leave it open to too much interpretation, so if you look at, for instance, if you looked at standard one, instructional leadership, indicator B, instructional, instruction indicator, say, element three, diverse learners' needs, right, we could have a long discussion about what diverse learners' needs are, but what the state did is, let's try to give some language and some information to school committees to use. So if you look two pages forward, under proficient, diverse learners' needs is defined as, well, the proficient level, while observing principal practice ensures that principals look for and identify a variety of teaching strategies and practices that are effective with diverse learners when they observe practices and review unit plans. Right, so that's getting down to the observable, I can see that, I can talk to someone about that, I can start to describe that. So the organization is standard, really big, if I was in an airplane, that's like the 30,000 feet, right? The indicator, okay, it's starting to get a little more specific, that's like the 10,000 feet. Then we get to the element, that's kind of nearing ground level, and the descriptor is helping us really hone our practices on what those things mean in the life of the superintendent.
So, one thing just about the system in itself, I actually very much appreciate the model from the state, not everyone feels the same way, I actually am very happy to have this. And why is because there's such a through line, as Mike mentioned earlier, between the superintendent's work, the administrators' work, the work of teachers and educators in general, so that the work at the school level is being driven by the district and school improvement plan goals, and of course, people's, the data and the professional practice of our educators, but it's really being able to say, here are the priorities of a district or of a school, and then, Mike has been working with groups of teachers around developing group goals, so it's about how do you drive that work forward and actually bring it to the classroom level. So that isn't, it isn't something that you're having a conversation around, the superintendent's evaluation devoid of what you're asking the superintendent to supervise of, the leaders that he or she are, you know, supervising, and then also, they, in turn, to their teachers. So, I actually very much appreciate the system.
Anything else, Michael?
I'm just open to questions about the process.
Before we get to questions, I wouldn't normally request of the press, but given the extraordinary complexity of this process, not just for superintendents, but for administrators and teachers as well, I would encourage you to find some way of incorporating at least some summary of this kind of process into whatever story you might be writing. Do you have my okay to do that?[950.32][950.32][laughter] What we would like to do next is throw it open to members of the committee who have questions, and at this point, questions only, for clarification from Michael's presentation. If you don't have any questions, that's fine, when we get to the reflections part, and I am going to ask everyone to provide some input, but for now, it's just simply an opportunity for you to pose questions. I would ask, you ask a question, and then one brief follow-up, and then we'll move on to the next person, and come back to you if there's, if there's no other group people asking questions. So, questions? Michael?
Can you go back once, one of the, yes, that one. So, this would be my first regional superintendent evaluation, so my previous many years is with Union 28 and Chute Springs, and I know things have been in flux. So, my question is really about the process, once each of the school committee members has done their individual work, and in the last few years, as law has changed, and I know Wayland was one of the things that we discussed a lot, there was open meeting discussion, and executive committee meeting discussion, and some papers could go into the meeting, and other papers cannot go into the meeting, and a lot of confusion. So, based on the fact that this is a new process, can you just go through the actual logistics of, we fill out something in paper, and we submit it for a summary, and then we have a discussion, and just that would be helpful, understanding that process?
She wanted to open?
I could, I could start how, I think the regulations are consistent with how we kind of walked through the process last year, but, again, this is, the three chairs kind of helped facilitate some of this. But last year, it was, we created a timeline where we asked the, each individual member to, to fill out their documents, and then, there was a determination of who would be the receiver of those documents, and it would not go, it would, I think it went through Debbie, I think, last year.
It became sealed.
And it came sealed to Debbie, and also included feedback from the administrative team to the school committee members, so that you saw the administrative team's feedback of my performance. And then that information went to the, to the three chairs, and then the three chairs compiled each individual member's information, and I think at that point, we actually used in numbering, we weighted the scoring rubric, and then, the summative was discussed among the three chairs, and then shared with the committee members. Three chairs did share that information with me prior to coming to the public session, and then the public session was a discussion of, and Rick can jump in on this, the actual summative evaluation. We did not discuss at that point each individual, I don't believe each individual.
We didn't discuss them, but they were there for anybody to see.
And it was all in public session, the only thing that went into executive session was discussion of contract.
Right.
So everything was.
And was there, yeah, just a quick, in terms of, if in discussing the summative in open meeting, people had things they wanted to follow up or amend, was there sort of a process where, and then, I think the superintendent gets a chance to also respond to the evaluation?
Yeah, and I, yes, and I don't think that there was really anything, I don't recall anything that adjusted at that moment, but of course, it could, it is a dialogue and discussion, and people saw how very clearly their input was weighted within, but we didn't have any, I don't think there was.
We didn't have any edits to the one that came to the full committee. I mean, also, Maria got to see that beforehand via the three chairs, so.
Okay, great, thanks.
We could have had edits, but we didn't.
Right. Catherine?
Yeah, I just wanted to also highlight one difference between last year and this year, which is that individual committee members' evaluations were not public record last year, and they are public record this year, so they can be accessed by anyone.
Michael, did you?
I was just gonna say, two things I didn't get into in this, because they don't, they're not implemented this year, but for folks who will be back in the future years on this committee, is that there will be a multiple measures of student achievement, much like there is for all educators, so that'll be coming. And the other is that there will be a staff feedback component, that we're just getting regulations on now, but that's not for this year, but just, some folks may be back, and I want to know that there are, much like the teacher one, it's a multi-year layout, uh, rollout, excuse me.
Questions from the committee?
I'm interested in seeing how, it looks like it's a lot closer between superintendent goals and the district goals, and perhaps they're almost the same, I don't know, when I look at this, I see a presentation of superintendent goals and plans for school committee.
I could speak to that a little bit, and everyone else jump in. So when we looked at the timeline, we were really cautious to say, you know, the MCAS performance comes first, so that people could see the data, and then see the district improvement plan, school improvement plans, and then, we set the date where the educator evaluation clearly was coming up. But what we wanted to make sure we had, the opportunity is that we had the chairs meet with me after I have your priority information today, that I sit and I think about, and after the district improvement plan, what my, my goals might be, based on your priority elements, so I would take those two to four from the district improvement plan, do the student learning goal and my professional practice goal, I would then meet with the three chairs, which we have set for on the 10th, which is the day after the district improvement plan, school improvement plan, where I will present to them my self-reflection and my proposed goals. Then they will send that out to the full committee, so that people could say, yeah, that looks, you know, I would suggest something here related to this topic, so that when it comes back in front of the group on the 23rd, people will have already been able to review the goals, and then have, have some input. Is that, so that's what we, how we kind of envisioned, because the timeline is tight, and I think all of our timelines tight this year, because we're really just rolling out this process ideally, would have been a little earlier, but it feels like it will work. And I should have brought the calendar, because it really does show the dates that we handed out last time, it shows the chronology of the meetings, and it's already scheduled. Did that answer what you were thinking?
Follow-up, Rick? No, no, no. Questions from other members? Michael?
I just had a, just in terms of the actual, let's see, standards indicators, and what's the next one?
Elements.
Elements.
Yep.
Am I correct, when I was looking over the elements, some of them speak to, say, the superintendent supervising the principals, making sure the principals do some stuff, but then others are more broad-based, sort of how Catherine was talking about, their system orientation. So is it varied, depending on the element, was, am I reading it correctly?
You're reading it absolutely correctly, and I think one of the reasons that the next step is happening is that, right, they're writing this for all districts in Massachusetts, right? So, all districts, not every district needs the next same things to move forward, so the priority setting process is trying to help this superintendent with what this group, the, the school committee feels like is needed in our community. Yeah, so it's not that every element is equal, right? So one of the helpful things about the process is, not just powering it for this, prioritizing them for the sake of writing a professional practice goal, but prioritizing them as a feedback mechanism, so that everybody gets a sense of the school committee's view on what the district needs to do to move forward.
Could I, thank you. Could I suggest to, I don't know if, Mike, if you take, before we go into the elements, would you just call our attention to the rubric itself, and help orient people to the rubric? I mean, just to that one page, I think is helpful. So say, you know, take A, I don't know, A3 or something like that.
Sure, so.
I don't know if that's.
Okay, so, why don't we look at page, if you're in there, why don't we look at page A5 out of 18? Since this is something that most districts are spending a lot of time on this year.
Thank you.
So, we're looking at page A5, it's indicator 1D, right, provides effective and timely supervision evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions, right? This is under instructional leadership, that's the, right, 30,000 feet, standard instructional leadership, this is an indicator within that, and then you see that there are three different elements, hopefully doesn't go onto the next page, sorry, four different elements, that are, fall within indicator related to evaluation. One's about educator goals, one's about observations and feedback, one's about ratings, and one's about alignment review. So when we look, there are 42 elements in the superintendent rubric, and really, at the element levels, the place where the discussions are gonna be rich, right? The standard level, it's just too broad, we're gonna have really broad conversations, you all have really broad conversations that may not be making you feel good, because you're not talking about what you're actually seeing, what you're actually commenting on. And the proficient is bolded, because that's often the language that's really helpful to talk about, because that's really at the point of meeting rigorous standards.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I just think it's helpful to orient.
Any other questions from members?
Just one comment, is, whatever of these rubrics we choose to like focus on, I guess, I'm always concerned about how we're measuring, you know, the improvements, like, let's say family collaboration was one of them, how do you measure family collaboration? I just hope that, like, in that example, if that's what we're, if that's what we're concerned about, that we have some method of measuring it.
So, on October 23rd, presentation of superintendent goals, right, so that feedback would be taken by the superintendent, the superintendent would then write a professional practice goal, let's say it was on that, I'm not making decisions for the school committee or superintendent. And then, within that goal would be benchmarking measures, so it would be measured over time, so there'd be presentation at the end about how, from the superintendent, how that person did related to the goal with the data that show, yes, we did X, Y, and Z, and here's how you would see it. Yeah. So the onus on that one is really, when the goal-setting process and the follow-through is on the person being evaluated, not on the evaluator.
Michael, if we could segue into the elements that were selected, if that's the right word, by those members of the committee, if you could share with the committee what this, this list is, and then we can move forward on comments, reflections.
Sure, so Debbie Gould compiled this from the responses that she got, based on what elements would be the most valuable to move the district forward. Right, so this is, this is information that's kind of, the superintendent, who the superintendent is, is unrelated to this list, this list is around the Amherst region, regional public schools and Amherst Public Schools, and what are the elements that we need to focus on to move our district forward. So my sense from Debbie is, this is a summary of the responses that she got, and really, this hopefully is a helpful tool to guide the committee's work in guiding the superintendent around the priority elements. So just organizationally, you see element, so it's 1, 2, 3, 4, so, I don't want to do the analysis, but, you know, you can see that that's how they're organized, so if you're looking for the specific language in the thicker document, you can use that and find them, you know, chronologically, through standard 14.
As we move forward in the remaining half hour or so, on this part of the discussion of the evaluation structure, I think it's important for people to, again, remember, we're not evaluating this evening, what we're doing is we're commenting on, reflecting upon the elements that are before us. I don't know if there's anyone sitting at the table this evening who did not contribute to this list, and it's irrelevant at the moment, but if you didn't, rather than add your two, at this point, I think it would behoove our overall conversation about this to just simply reflect upon those items that we have here, how we would want to add additional elements to those who did not have an opportunity to lend their voice to this list, will have to be determined in the future, I suspect, but at the moment, since we're in the process of constructing this, and we won't even finish this evening necessarily, if we could just reflect on what's here. And again, I want to, I want to repeat what Michael mentioned earlier, and what Catherine mentioned earlier, too, about really providing direction to the superintendent as she moves as she moves forward in moving the district forward. That's really what we're trying to do. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna open it up to each and every member of the committee. I'd like you to comment in any manner you feel appropriate on the elements that are here. It's an open conversation, if you will, there's no restrictions on what you have to say. And then I'll go through everyone on the committee, and then, time permitting, and if people want to add additional comments, give people a second opportunity. So I'll begin, Catherine, you go first.
Sure, sure. So as I said at the beginning, I found this a difficult process, initially, anyway. In part because when I read the elements, you know, there are a lot of things that are important to having a really sound and successful school district. For example, you know, there's an element about student safety and emotional and physical, and that's obviously incredibly important. But as I thought about it further and I thought about this frame, what did, what did I want to prioritize for this year and next, well, next year really, in terms of moving the district towards the goals that I think are going to achieve some of the success around things that we've talked about, sort of our overarching goals? And to me, that's access to best instructional practice for all kids. I think that will really push the district forward in terms of the achievement gap and in terms of making sure that all kids are having a really positive and successful academic experience with teachers who are continuous learners. So when I thought about it in that way, I chose instructional practice as one of my priorities. And as I read the element, it was sort of what proficient was in that element, that what really struck me was to ensure that principals identify a variety of effective teaching strategies. So I thought about the diverse population that we have in our district, and I thought that was really important. That's a really important thing for teachers to be able to do and principals to be able to move their schools forward. So I chose that, and I chose certainly knowledge and use of data along the same lines. What are we seeing? How, what are our kids doing now? How are our teachers doing? And how can we help everybody move forward? So that's how I thought about it, that's what I chose. And I, I thought this would be, these two things would be really essential to pushing us forward to meeting our goals, our overarching goals.
Thank you. Rick?
Could I just ask, the first thing that you mentioned was that policies and practices?
That's under effective administrative leadership, 1B1, instructional practice.
So it's 1B1 and 1E1?
And 1E1, knowledge and use of data.
That answer your question?
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Catherine, anything else?
No, I just, I mean, that's my, that's my thought process.
Rick?
Me next. I picked two, I picked two. I picked two data ones just because I'm kind of all over that. So I picked 1E1, knowledge and use of data, and 1E3, improvement of performance effectiveness and learning. They seem to kind of overlap, and I think I kind of like 1E3 better just the way that it sounds when it's, when you look at the actual proficient, you know, description. But it's just that if you're doing well in those, I guess, you're gonna be doing well. But it's hard to say because this is, this is about measuring and not what you're doing to get there. But I just feel like what we're doing to get there is going really well. I'd just like to see more about how we know whether we're improving or not, that's all. And I, yeah, but I agree with everything Catherine said too about, you know, instructional practice and all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shabazz?
So in terms of this sheet with these elements and these responses and even what we're going through right now, is this going toward, because the word was mentioned earlier, a certain type of weighting that system?
What this is doing, these priority elements are helping for me to hear the school committee's priorities. So when I'm developing goals for my evaluation, I'm taking into consideration your priorities before I write those goals. So what comes back in front of you should be reflective of this discussion tonight.
I still want to query the, when the word, when the word weighting was used earlier, if there is some numerical weighting that's done to this, to this rubric. But for purposes of what's been laid out, I would call attention to Roman numeral 1B3, diverse learners' needs. When I look at the MCAS, not only for this year, but over, over several years, when I look at Amherst Regional High School, external suspensions and the pattern there over decades.
Excuse me, Shabazz, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt with all due respect. If you could focus your comments on the elements that are on the list.
I just did, what are you talking about?
I'm sorry, did I misunderstand you?
I said Roman numeral 1B3, diverse learners' needs. It's not on there.
No, I, that's, that's...
Is it on my first sheet?
Yes, please.
It's not on this.
I realize that. And what I, what I asked people to comment on at the outset was, were those items that are on the list?
But if you're not, okay, I didn't notice what you're talking about. I don't have any.
I'm sorry?
I don't have any from that list.
Okay, thank you. Zoe?
Well, I just saw these, but I mean, I guess what they're saying, like the knowledge of use and data, and it seems like 1E1, or IE1 and IE3 kind of go hand in hand because IE3 is, you know, improvement of performance, and it talks about using multiple data sources. And IE1 talks about being able to use appropriate data sources. So I kind of see what you guys are talking about.
Thank you. Mark?
So I'll echo what Catherine had to say about instructional practice, and I want to echo what Rick had to say. For me, 1E3, improvement of performance effectiveness and learning. What really jumps out is the proficient, if you don't mind if I could just read it, because I really think it speaks to what Maria and her team are doing. That I've been most impressed with over the last three months is the, under the proficient element or the descriptor, it says, provides administrators and administrator teams with the resources and support to disaggregate assessment data and assist them in identifying students who need additional support. And I really think that that is something that we have to give, that last part. I've been impressed with the priority that I've, in talking with people, that our district gives, and I'd like us to keep up the commitment to that as well.
Thank you. Michael?
I would echo what Catherine said at the beginning about it being hard. It was definitely hard. I think my observation is that there's definitely themes, and some of the standards and indicators point to the same issue. So part of it was teasing it out and saying, okay, if we're looking at high-quality education, where's it play out? If we're looking at diverse learners, which one do you pick? So the two that I ended up with after thinking about it, the first one was, let's see, it's 4A1, the commitment to high standards. So just to read it. Fosters a shared commitment to high standards of teaching and learning for all administrators with high expectations for achievement for all. So I think it speaks to just sort of bring people together. There was another one about shared vision, but I think it's bringing people along for the ride and saying, we're shooting high and we want everyone to succeed. The other one was underneath it, the cultural proficiency indicator policies and practices. And at first, I was a little put off because I was thinking policies and practices is not really where I ended it up, wanted to end up. But when I read it, it spoke to what I thought was important, which was develops and implements culturally sensitive policies that acknowledge diverse backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges of administrator, students, and staff. And this, I think, was when I was asking the question to you, Mike, you know, this one includes students in it where some don't include students. And so I sort of liked, this was focused on the students as well. Provides administrators with relevant resources to support them in building cultural proficiency and promotes a culture that affirms individual differences. So given, you know, this committee's focus on making sure that everyone succeeds and understanding different diverse learning, it comes up in other elements, but it seems like this spoke to it. And I think, just to pick up on what Shabazz talked about, looking over the MCAS stuff, it's clear that this needs to be a priority. Not that it hasn't been necessarily, but I think putting on the front burner with the high excellence is important.
Thank you, Michael. Would anyone else care to make any additional comments? I, while I was sitting down doing this myself, I felt like I was channeling Noah, trying to find two elements to bring to the ark. This was incredibly difficult. The ones that I, the two that I chose were 1B2, which I think could also be replaced by, as Michael pointed out, the commitment to high standards. These seem sort of interchangeable. I think there has been, and I suspect will continue to be, an emphasis and a focus and a great deal of channeling of resources into communicating the importance of maintaining high standards for everyone. And that, for me, pertained to the schoolhouse community. I chose policies and practices also because I felt that that pertained to the much larger community and that envelops and that wraps around the school district community and the importance of maintaining communication and positive, strong relationships with members of the community. I thought that those were the, that's the lifeblood of the district. And I thought that was, that was a high element for me. But to stop it too was extraordinarily difficult. And I would encourage members of the community at large to get ahold of a copy of the entire document, just so you can see how complex this entire process is when you multiply, as Michael, I think the 30,000 feet, the 10,000, the ground level is a great way of trying to understand the complexity of this. But then when you add the four levels of effectiveness, that's yet another factor to multiply this entire document by, and it becomes quite complex. Michael, do you have sufficient input from the committee this evening to move forward? Or are there things, more that you need?
For me, this is very helpful. This allows me to really look at what the initial priorities were and then kind of get some additional feedback, so that, you know, I have my work to do.
Michael?
I just had two quick comments. First, just because I'm assuming that it's gonna fall to the chairs to do this work. I think this is a great rubric. It's massively comprehensive and really complex. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that on school committee, we're volunteers, and that signing up to do this, to oversee the superintendent and the process, is a ton of work. And, you know, it's a really good thing, but it requires lots of effort on real human beings' part. So thank you guys in advance. The thing that struck me, and it's sort of, I think it's gonna be one of my themes, this sort of detangling the regional school committee from Amherst and Pelham, because this is really, you know, the district is sharing, three districts are sharing one superintendent. And so in identifying which elements might be important, and I'm not quite sure how to do it, I mean, I think it'll come out in a dip because that's related to a district. But I don't know if you can necessarily tag things related to district-level stuff, but I think that's, there's, it's a challenge there because what might be really important for one of the districts might not be as important for another one. And just understanding how that's gonna play out.
I'm not sure this will help with that conundrum, but in the packet, actually, it put in an appendix from the state, which is appendix D, which says, what changes in the process should be considered for superintendents serving more than one school committee? It's not the, I mean, it's two paragraphs, I don't think it's gonna resolve that tension, but at least it gives some language and acknowledges that this is, it's not a unique problem to Amherst and Amherst region and Pelham. It's, there's many districts struggling with the same issue.
Right.
Thank you, Michael.
Sure.
Any other comments from the committee?
Rick?
Rick?
Are we trying to narrow this down to two to four or something?
Michael?
No. So really what you're doing is, there's one element, a professional practice element, goal rather, sorry, that the superintendent writes based on the conversation. And the other kind of process benefit is superintendent just got to hear about a couple priorities, not just one the school committee has, that may be integrated into a district improvement plan and self-assessment, that sort of thing. So the job is really, you know, the tally sheet and the conversation, not that you have to get it down to a minute level.
Last chance. Thank you, Michael, for presentation number one. Before Michael gets to presentation number two, I want to acknowledge all the members of the staff who have sat through the first presentation and are with us this evening to help us get through the second presentation, the MCAS presentation. So on behalf of the entire committee, let me extend my appreciation and thanks for your being here this evening and extending your day considerably. We very much appreciate it, thank you. Michael?
Sure, so people just get a sense and orientation. I'll be presenting some global district and larger school-level data. And then individual schools will come up and talk a little, give a little narrative to the numbers and what it actually means in their schools and what's happening last year and what's happening this year. And I also want to start by saying that the MCAS is just one data point, right? So what's nice about MCAS is the state does a great job organizing it, disaggregating it, and there's value in it. And it's one data point. And we give many assessments, we make lots of decisions, not just based on one data point. So I think it's just important to note that, that it gets a lot of attention because it comes from the state, and maybe rightfully so, and it's one data point. I think the other thing that I want to say is just that we care a lot about achievement, right? Because all the things that happen based on achievement, whether we believe society that that should happen or shouldn't happen. We want to prepare kids to be successful. And we also want kids to be fully functioning adults, we want them to be emotionally healthy. We want them to have friends, we want them to enjoy coming to school. And there's, those aren't mutually exclusive, and there's a tension, right? So I think how Amherst has come out is, we really care, we want high achievement for all students, each and every student. We continue to strive to improve for that. And we also don't want to go to the place where MCAS is all we talk about all year long. I don't think that would be satisfactory to the parent students or the staff or you all, I think, in terms of this district, these districts. So I think there's a lot of attention on MCAS in this presentation I'm making, but I also want to give a larger context to it as well. So some objectives for this presentation, there's a new accountability system. I want to help the school committee know about that. Understand student growth percentile, which is part of the new accountability system. I'll share that the student growth percentile and the PPI, which is new accountability measure for the district and the schools in a variety of areas. And further the understanding of how data is being used, so beyond MCAS, I think it's just the logical place to talk about that, given the previous conversation in particular. And I want to, you know, my goal, process-wise, is that hopefully everyone on the committee gains the information, understanding, to analyze the data and to ask questions and be part of that conversation. Because there's been so much change in our accountability system and with MCAS, I think it's only murkying the waters, so I'm hoping to, I don't know if there's a word, unmurky, but that's what I'm trying to do. So we used to have something called AYP, which was Advocate Yearly Progress. It was part of the No Child Left Behind law. So since 2002, that's been our operating accountability measure. In February of last year, the state received a waiver, so we no longer have AYP. It's no longer part of our accountability system. It's a two-year waiver that we've received. I think, people think it's unlikely we'll ever go back, but I want to give you all the information. So we have a new system. And the new system the state has is, as it says, progress in performance index. And those words were picked specifically, and you'll see why in a second. So the first part is the CPI, which is the achievement part. Sorry, that's smaller than I thought it was gonna be. And so the only new element on the achievement side is that science is now part of it. So if you remember in the past, all of our accountability structure was just achievement, and it was just math, ELA, now we're including science. And for us, that's a good thing. I'll come out explicitly, you know, for the high school, for instance, the CPI is really high in science, so it's only helping our achievement, our process with this. You know, 91% of our kids at the high school got advanced or provisioned, 69% of the state did, 55% were in just the did, 55% were in just the advanced category compared to 24 of the state. So, this is a really good thing for us at science to include. I think it's just a good thing for kids, too, that, you know, we don't want to do math and literacy at the expense of science, especially with the world the kids are entering. So, that bubble is expanded. It used to just be ELA, math, now it includes science, but there's two more bubbles that didn't use to be there. So, now there's this thing called SGP, which is really a growth measure. It's only in math and in ELA. We're going to go really in-depth in that later. But the short story for now is that's a measure of how well kids did this year as compared to how they did last year. We'll get much more detailed, and I'll give you more of the metrics in a bit, but that's the short story to help you right now. And the last one's only for the high school, and it's graduation rate and dropout rate. So, for every school, pre-K to eight, they're looking at five components, and for the high school, they're looking at seven, right? And those things lead to a yearly PPI, which has been zero and 100. So, it gets a little more complicated, because PPI is calculated on a yearly basis, but what gets reported in the accountability structure is a cumulative score. So, in the past, our model was based on, this year you did this, that's, the only thing was looked at. You did great last year, doesn't matter. You did bad last year, doesn't matter. We're just looking year by year. And this model is looking at a four-year composite. So, with the scores I'll share with you, which are the cumulative ones, 40% are based on this year's scores. 30% is based on last year's scores. 20% is based on 2010 scores, and, 20%, excuse me, and 10% based on 2009. And I think this goes forward each year. So, like, next year, 2009 scores are no longer calculated. They're never, they're no longer part of getting the cumulative score. So, every year, the current year is 40%, and then it backtracks from that.
Just a quick question in the bigger context. I understand that we have a two-year waiver, but I also understand that Massachusetts, you know, is, was the leader in the national rating as we sent all these people down to DC to help create the new thing. So, is the likelihood that this paradigm is going to sort of be embraced nationally?
Yes. So, one thing, or at least supported by the federal government. So, just going back a slide, sorry to do that. So, when we think about CPI, one difference, for instance, is the CPI used to be calculated at 100% by 2013, 2014, right? A lot of popular, a lot of press written about that. Now, our CPI is about, not getting too complicated, having the difference between where you were last year and where 100% is by 2017. So, they're already, even in a two-year waiver, projecting out five years. So, I think that's a sign of how they, how strongly they feel about the waivers, continued support. So, then they take that PPI number, and they classify into one of five levels, okay? So, level one is PPI is over 75 in aggregate and for all subgroups. That means that the SE is the, what used to be called the Department of Education, very little involvement. Level two is, you know, within the state average, you're not quite at 75 in all areas, but again, the department's involvement's pretty low. Level three means that your PPI is in the bottom 20% of the state, either in the aggregate or in the subgroup. I want to speak about just for a second. So, that means that, let's say you were looking at the subgroup of low-income students. And even though your aggregate's strong, your low-income students performed in the bottom 20% of low-income students across the state, even if your aggregate's high, you're level, you could be a level-three school. And, or participation rate is below 90%. So, at that point, department's getting a little more involved. Level four is if you're a level-three score, you can, school, you continue not to improve. Then the state is particularly involved in level five. There aren't level-five schools right now, but that's where they're talking about state takeover. Does that sort of make sense?
So, in the places where the state has stepped in, I mean, right now, it's only four levels, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so they're adding a level?
They are.
Okay.
So, what happens if you're a level-four school, which is chronically underperforming, you continue not to improve?
Okay.
Yeah. So, now I'm going to start showing some data. So, something that's really helpful to look at when we look at any data is lateral inference. So, when we look at data, sometimes we select the data, and our instinct is go right to an action. I looked at that data, we need to do X, right? And really, that's not helpful, because data should, any look at data should give us more questions than answers, right? It should give us more things to investigate than answers. So, really, it's just a helpful visual and a process for me, is we select data, we describe what we see, we try to explain what we see based on what we know, we evaluate that hypothesis, and then we get to proposing actions. So, I think it's, it just is very easy to go right to the action, and then we're often making actions based on a miss, a wrong hypothesis about data, right? So, I think just, I always do it, and I present this to teachers, and I think it might be helpful for the committee to see that chart as well. So, here's the data for the schools. So, I'm not going to read it down. I think two things I want to say about this, is you'll see that most of the schools in the district are within 66 and 71. That's not a huge statistically significant difference, and those are solid scores. You'll see Pelham is high. Pelham is a small school, does a wonderful job for its students. It also has different levels of poverty than some of the other schools in the chart, which is not to critique it. They do a great job, but since achievement's part of it, and achievement unfortunately is correlated in some ways to poverty, I wanted to point that out. And the other thing I want to point out about Fort River, which is the other one that you might, your eyes might go to, and for Fort River, you'll feel better in a couple minutes, because we're going to talk about growth. And remember that this is a four-year composite score. So, it's taking into account, only 40% was based on last year, 60% of it, more than half, is based on three years prior. And Fort River made some really nice growth last year, you should see it a little bit. So, I just want to make sure that you knew that ahead of time. And the high schools under appeal, I think Mark can talk about that a little later, but we're just trying to look at participation and making sure we have the right kids on the right list. So, I think that is helpful, and what's maybe more helpful is to know that the different, what we're actually using the data for. So, we're disaggregating by strands. We're looking for where are there curricular holes, right? So, I was at a school this, yesterday, I'm sorry, last, end of last week, and we were looking at, okay, where can we find the strands? I was meeting with reading specialists across the elementary schools, and they were able to look at data and make some sense of, ooh, here's something that we're doing really well on, and here's something that is striking to us, so we can address that in a curricular way. We're looking at question type, open response, first multiple choice. We're looking at race, gender, income status, disability. We're doing that at all schools, and part of the way, my role is positioned, is that I'm going to schools and working with principals and teacher leaders with this information. So, we're not looking at just the aggregates, we're getting much deeper into the data. And then, what are we doing in the future? So, on the left is a picture that's supposed to indicate a data system. So, we want to really invest our time, energy, and resources in having a data system that works both for administrators, district leaders, and teachers. So, frankly, companies starting to come out with better products, right? Because we really want to have a teacher view that teachers can look at, make sense of, and use. And we also want to have the, take a step back, let's disaggregate lots of data, let's look at different groups of kids. So, one of the things the superintendent's tasked me with, is taking, and a couple other people, is taking a look at what data systems are out there. We've used a number of different things. Doug Slaughter's done incredible amount of work, but there are ways that we can make it more usable for teachers and more useful for district and district staff and principals. The thing on the right is a book cover. So, three of us at the central office are getting trained in DataWise, which is a process to use data. It's in a cycle, as you can kind of see from, maybe from visual. And the idea is that we'll roll that out over time with teachers, so that, you know, with teacher leaders, principals involved, so that we have all this data. So, often districts get into a place of being drip, which is data-rich, information-poor. So, we have so much data that we can't make sense of it, and this is really a way to learn how to harness that. The authors are from Harvard and a group of, and we'll talk about this in a second, a group of eight folks, six administrators and two teachers, went to a Closing the Achievement Gap conference in July, a five-day conference, and most of the day was dedicated to data. So, you think about Closing the Achievement Gap, and there was a whole lot on youth cultures, a whole lot on, a lot of things that would be more predictable. But out comes Elizabeth City, one of the authors of this book, to talk about how, in a recent book about Chicago, large urban school system, what were the distinguishing features of schools that were outperforming similar schools? And consistently, it was, they're actively using data to support the instruction in their schools, right? So, it was just interesting. We didn't, I didn't necessarily think that going into this conference, but we all came away saying, you know, let's take this on. So, the head of the conference is Ron Ferguson. That's his picture. He's a professor at Harvard, he's MIT-trained economist who works in that field, but also in the education field. So, one of the things that was helpful was, he helped us frame our work around data, right? Because there's a million ways you could look at it, and he helped us with some best practices. So, eight of us, again, there in the summer. So, the first point is that comparisons of school progress should be used, measured using value-added achievement gains or growth from one point in time into another for a given cohort of students. So, what some of the challenges are, is if you're looking at fourth-grade class compared to next year's fourth-grade class in a relatively small sample size, you think of a school like Pelham, or even a larger school, you know, there's going to be a lot of variability in the 20 kids in that grade versus next year's 20 kids in that grade. So, looking at growth compares the same kids to each other over time. A little bit about Dr. Ferguson, so I know that there's some concerns about the growth model here in Massachusetts, so I emailed him on, I have it here, 4:30 last Thursday. He emailed back at 1:18 Friday morning with information before me. And what he said basically about the growth model was, it's relatively valid, but longitudinal comparisons are much more helpful. So, you really want to look over a course of a couple of years. Smaller schools are more affected by the, like, they'll have a lot of varying from year to year, than larger school, like, the N size really matters, more than even on the achievement side. And that there are some system, he forwarded me a paper by four economists from Missouri, said he'd talk about it if I needed help, but I was able to push through it. And essentially, there's three growth models. The one Massachusetts has picked, which many other states have picked, doesn't account for demographics in it, and it gets to a statisticians versus a philosophical point of view on that. I think the statistician, the economist's view is that there are some ones that are a little more fine-grained on that, but it doesn't invalidate some of this information. So, huge, and he's committed to our district, right? He's emailing me at 1:18 on Friday morning, you know, that says something about his commitment to our, to the group of people who went to see him. So, the second frame we had was, at the school district level, progress concerning achievement gaps should be measured in relationship to state-level benchmarks, right? Similar groups statewide, or his frame, his real push is white statewide for students of color, not in ways that measure groups across, measure groups within the same district against one another. So, his frame on that is, our kids in Amherst or Schutzbury or Pelham or Leverett, they're not compete, really competing against each other, right? In any, like, model around competitiveness compared to getting into college, they're competing against a much larger group of people. Realistically, probably, they're competing against the world, but not the world, the world doesn't take MCAS. So, we take the largest group, which is the students in Massachusetts who take MCAS, and that way, we don't have incentives that hit one student against another within a district, when really, it's almost inconsequential. What matters is how they're doing relative to the state and the larger group. It's a really helpful frame for me, I'll just say, and I think I can say for us, to think about, because, you know, until we had a frame to look at the data and talk about achievement gaps, we weren't even having the same conversation. So, it was really helpful that he helped us with that, and that's what other high-achieving districts, that's the frame they're using.
Mike, can I ask you just one question about that?
Yeah.
My sense is that if someone were to counter that argument, they would say, shouldn't we be looking at districts that are sort of similar, you know, as opposed to the state, which is a whole, includes everything, to sort of, you know, pull out districts? So, what would, how would he respond?
So, he would respond that we should be using the growth model that these economists in this paper write, which does a little bit of that. So, I can talk at the end, if people want, about comparison districts and how we did compared to comparison districts. I have that data. It's not in the PowerPoint, but I'm happy to.
No, it's not a, it's not a huge issue for me, but it seemed like that would be the counterargument.
Absolutely. And he, you know, as much as he tentatively agrees with it, he doesn't, he's not dismissive of the growth model that he shows. But absolutely, so if you're interested in the 33-page paper by four economists from Missouri, I'm happy to send it to you.
Okay.
It's actually kind of interesting, once you get through the statistical model part of it, but that's just me.
That is just you.
Sorry. So, so here's what it is. It's a measure of student progress that compares changing, changes in students' MCAS scores to changes of other students, like an academic peer group, and I'll get a little more specific with this. And the idea is that in any given testing year, every student has an equal chance to go at the 99th percentile. So, no matter if you were a warning or in that category last year, or if you were an advanced, everybody has a chance to get in the 99th percentile, where statistically, not everyone has the same chance to be an advanced, right? An advanced might be an artifact of lots of things, whereas growth is an artifact of progress that student makes over the course of a year, right? So, here's another way, oh, this is actually, it's getting hard to see, but I think actually the colors are helpful, right? So, here's a scatter plot of every district in Massachusetts, their scores in the math MCAS last year. So, the chart shows that the purple circles, which are very few of, have zero, between 0 and 10% low-income, blue, which you see a lot of, 11 to 20, right? And so, those colors on the right side of the key, I think I can use this, no, doesn't show up on that, shows up on this. Yeah, on that key, that's showing, and the size of the circles are roughly related to that number of students in a district. So, the larger the circle, now, they're not totally, it's not like a perfect mathematical model, but a larger circle basically means it, it's like the boss in the Springfield large districts. So, what you can see is, the higher that the circles are, that's the higher the achievement is of that district. The further to the right the circles are, that's the larger the growth is. So, one thing that you see is, the correlation between income of the school, a low-income percentage, and achievement's pretty high. You see a couple reds. If you looked a little closer, if I showed you a different model, you'd see that those are very, very small schools. So, in terms of the number of students in those schools, it's not incredibly significant. And then, if you look at the bottom, you see every school pretty much is red or yellow or orange, right? So, what we're seeing, and it's sad, this isn't good information, but what we know is that achievement is highly correlated to income level. What's more interesting to me, if you look, forget about high and low, if you just look right to left, right? So, the students, the schools that are way out on, growth on the right are a pretty diverse mix, even if you cut it at 60%. So, people will find out I can't draw a straight line, but, right? If you look up, there's definitely some clues in there, but there's all sorts of colors. And that's information that helps us know that growth is less correlated to income than achievement is. So, in some ways, it's a more helpful measure than the straight achievement, which we know is connected to privilege. Okay? I'll do a couple more models, or here's some text for it. So, say you're the student whose growth percentage was 90. So, it means that they grew as much or more than 90% of the academic peers since with similar score histories on that test. Only 10% grew more. And example two is, so if student with growth percentile of 23 means that they grew as much or better than 23% of kids with similar score histories, and less well than 77%. The only year there's a, it's not a one-year-to-year gap, is from eighth grade to 10th grade. That's a two-year gap. So, when we look, talk about its growth at the high school, know that we're talking eight to 10. Every other is just a one-year interval. So, here's another way to cut it, just because it's a complicated concept. So, say kid gets 230, gets 230 in grade six. At grade seven, this spectrum, he gets 230 again, or this is Gina, so it's a sheet. So, 65% of kids actually went up. They didn't get, the kids with similar score histories, they got more than 230, because each year, 230 doesn't mean the same thing, right? Or MCAS was never designed that way. So, this student, Gina, would have a growth percentile of 35, because she performed as well or better than 35% of kids with similar score histories. And the average, the typical, is 40 to 59. Anything above 60 or higher is considered superior, high-growth. Anything below 40 is considered low-growth. Anything between 40 and 60, 40 and 59 is considered typical. Here's another student, so stronger score, 248, 248. The student goes down to 244. So, we can say, oh, they're still proficient, but we compare them to the larger group, and what we're saying is, they have a growth percentile of 25, because 75% of kids got those scores actually improved. Whereas on the achievement side, this student would just, it would be unchanged. So if we just looked at the achievement side of that original, it would not, not account for this change at all. So here's a student who's struggling a bit more Ivy in school, she's getting a 214, which is in the warning failing mark, but here she is going to grade seven, and she goes up to 226. So here's a student goes from warning to needs improvement. We would still say that we want to continue to work with Ivy to support her, but this is a huge growth, credit to her teachers, credit to Ivy, credit to her family, and she's at the 92nd percentile for student growth. So it just shows that it's a different way to cut it, where we're really looking at growth over the course of a year. And I think it, students, you know, when we're looking at students like Ivy or teachers who are teaching students like Ivy, we want them to feel like there's equity in the system, and this is one way to provide it. So here are, oh, I'm sorry, before we get on to the specifics, are there questions on the growth, or is that multiple models helping?
Mike? So let's imagine a student who is sort of across these grades is always very high achievement.
Yeah.
So there's obviously less room to grow.
So that, so it's a good question, so a lot of growth models, that's true, and with this growth model, what, what the state feels like, and I've read some technical pieces that, why people like this model, is let's say you get 280, that's the highest score you can get in MCAS. Only 15% on average, ranges a little bit depending on the year, get 280 again. So if you get 280 and you get 280 again, so you get two perfect scores, your growth percentile is 80, likely to be about 85%. That's a pretty high growth score, right? If you get 280 and you get 278, we're saying, you got probably one question wrong, two questions wrong, your growth percentile is going to be right about average, if not a little higher. So it, it accounts for that, because the idea is that really very few students get perfect scores multiple years in a row. Yeah, whereas some growth models, I know in other states, it's a big conflict, because once a student goes from 280 to 278, it's not relative, so it, it weighs a heavy weight, yeah. On the achievement side too, so you have a student who goes from 280 to 240, we're probably not that happy about that. On the achievement side, there'll be no negative, you know, piece, or a student goes from 240 to 80, there'd be no bonus for the school, and yet, this, this model accounts for that a bit. I'm sorry.
I was just, I was thinking, in terms of the growth model, if I understand it correctly, at the individual student level, one of the beneficial components is that, I don't know if motivation is the right word, but, you know, there's a sense of achieving and growth by having, by growing, you know, it doesn't matter what your score is necessarily, but you've done stuff. So even if you're starting out, like in, with Ivy's example, you know, where she's in the warning category, the fact that you're putting in effort and learning and advancing is a motivator.
That, that would be part of the design, both for students and for teachers.
Great.
Too, yeah. So here are the growth median, student growth percentiles, so the reason they use median instead of mean is that individual students can have a high variance, right? Things happen in kids' lives, positive or negative, and, and so that they find that the median is more accurate than the mean. So you can see, as I talked about Fort River earlier, so Fort River's both in literacy and in math, their growth index, their growth percentile was above the mean 50. All these scores are within the typical range, except for, you see some over 60 or above scores there, those are in the superior range. We didn't have any in the low range, which was good. On the bottom there, I underlined and bolded the district's scores, so when it says Amherst, that's the Amherst Elementary Schools region, that's the middle school and high school combined. And P is Pelham, which is both a district and a school, but I've left it unbolded, just simplicity sake. And again, going back to Dr. Ferguson's explanation of model, looking at the two-year comparison is help, more helpful than looking at the one-year, you'll see that most places in our district, we had significant improvement from last year to this year in terms of the growth. So in other words, we're growing faster than we did a year ago. Our kids' achievement is growing at a faster rate than it did one year ago, which is, which is really helpful to look at, yeah. And so before I go on, I'm just forgetting that I wanted to introduce these slides. So I also, going, coming back from the conference around achievement, and the achievement gap, we want to disaggregate that data. So I picked race as one area, and not all races, but a couple races that are predominant ones right now numerically in our districts. You can disaggregate lots of things, but because it's particularly interesting to ours, I thought it'd be wise and thought the committee might benefit, but know that this kind of analysis goes on for all the different areas. So we start with African-American students. So here's a two-year comparison of the median growth percentile for African-American students in Amherst and region. So when you see the plus one and negative one, those are both not particularly significant, significantly statistically significant, but the plus 8.5 and plus 23 are statistically significant. Plus 23 is particularly significant, statistically significant, excuse me, I can't say that, I'll stop at that, yeah, I know. So, so that I thought was helpful, and then I also wanted to do the comparison Dr. Ferguson pushed us on around comparing students of color to other groups of student color, but then also the white norm for, across the state. So on the column on the left, you see elementary ELA, elementary math, secondary ELA, secondary math, Pelham is not included in this, just because it's such a small school, so this is the Amherst Elementary Schools and then the region. So the, that it's Amherst African-American students, that's the student growth percentile, you'll see that all are over 50. Then you have the state African-American students, which is a little depressing to me, but none of them are over 50, even compared to the aggregate in the state, so we're well above the state average for African-American students in terms of growth. And then Dr. Ferguson pushing us further to say, what's the state average for white students? Because if we're going to close the achievement gap, our students, our African-American students have to make more progress than the state level for white students for that gap to close, and that's the frame. So you'll see that in the Amherst Elementary Schools, both, in both areas, our African-American students are growing faster than white students across the state. In the secondary level, our ELA students are at the same level, and our secondary math significantly higher, 12 points higher. And then I want to go on to Latino students, and then we'll hear from principals. But if people find, I know this is like relatively complex set of data, so. So here's comparison of Latino growth percentiles over the past two years. You'll see in the Amherst Elementary Schools, the growth percentile went down, at region it went up, in literacy, and in both Amherst and region, significant growth in math among Latino students. And here's the same chart that I made for African-American students, but for Latino students. So what you'll notice is, Amherst Elementary ELA, we're slightly below the state level, we're above in all the other areas. And compared to the statewide group, which is again, if we're talking about closing achievement gaps, that's, that's really our target, on math, we're well above, on ELA, we're not well above, we're a bit below, and then a little more below in terms of the elementary. So I'm going to summarize, so overall strengths, our growth's a lot stronger than previous year. Our comparison to external groups, i.e. the Ferguson model, shows significant progress in growth in African-American students across the board, and Latino students particularly in math. And some of the challenges we saw is our growth in special education students was not at the level we'd want it to be at, and our Latino students in ELA, we want to take a closer look. So that ladder of inference, right, that we talked about, really goes into both of those. So we're not jumping to, we need to do X, it's, we need to investigate why those scores weren't higher, why were they inconsistent with the rest of the scores before we would make anything like a plan or action step, because we'd be making assumptions as to why those things are, instead of investigating deeper, and that's, that's the model that we have.
Do you want to say anything about the comparison to districts now, before the principals speak, or do you do that after?
Do you want to ask it? I don't know.
Do you want, Mike, one of Michael's questions was, I think it was Michael, questions or comparisons to schools, which we have that information, would you like Mike to speak to that now before the principals come up?
Do you do intro now? Okay. Sure, so I have some comparisons, and I did them in the aggregate, and then also for African-American students and Latino students. Sorry, it's going to be like a ton of information, but I don't know how to do it any other way. So in the aggregate, in math, both for the elementary and secondary, districts, actually, take a step back, I chose Leverett, Schutzbury, just because they're part of our, connected, because they're at our middle school, high school, so I included those. North Hampton, Chinese Immersion, PVPA, Cambridge, Brookline, Newton, Longmeadow. Not all those groups had enough folks in them in all subgroups to be reported, but that's the comparison group. I'm open to, if people want more, I'm happy to do it. So in math, both at the elementary and secondary level, our scores were above Schutzbury, our growth, not our scores, excuse me, our growth, was above Schutzbury, North Hampton, PVPA, and Chinese Immersion. It was the same as Cambridge, Brookline, roughly the same within a statistically significant amount. Cambridge, Brookline, Newton, Longmeadow, and only district that had higher growth than us in that group was Leverett. Which is ironic, because I believe they used the math program that we just, at the Amherst Elementary Schools, just adopted. At the, for ELA, for Amherst, for the elementary schools, we were above Schutzbury, Cambridge, North Hampton, at the same level as Leverett, Longmeadow, Brookline, Newton. There was no one that was significantly above us in terms of growth. And at ELA at region, pretty much the same as PVPA, North Hampton, Cambridge, and Brookline and Newton were a little higher. So then the African-American subgroup, so again, trying to pull out and get to a little more detail. Math at the region was the highest in that comparison group, there was above North Hampton, PVPA, Cambridge, Brookline, Newton, Longmeadow, in terms of growth, significantly above. Math at Amherst, at the elementary level, is above North Hampton, Longmeadow, same as Cambridge, Brookline, and Newton, and it wasn't below anyone for the African-American subgroup. Leverett, Schutzbury did have enough students to be reported. ELA at the region, North Hampton, we were pretty much the same, actually, everything was clumped together, North Hampton, PVPA, Cambridge, Brookline, Newton, Longmeadow, all pretty much congealed. ELA at the region for African-American students. ELA for Amherst, we were above North Hampton, Cambridge, Brookline, Newton, Longmeadow. No one else was, was same or below. For Latino subgroup, we were, and Amherst, sorry, I know this is going to get hard to follow, but Amherst, so the elementary math, we were, for Latino students, we were above North Hampton, Longmeadow, Cambridge, Brookline, we were the same as Newton, we were not below anyone. Math at the region for Latino students, we were above North Hampton, PVPA, Cambridge, Brookline, Longmeadow, same as Newton, no one was above us, we weren't below anyone. ELA at the region, so if you remember that, when we took, looked at Latino students' growth, literacy was, was the area that we were, our growth wasn't as fast in. ELA at the region, we were pretty much the same as North Hampton, PVPA, Cambridge, and a bit below, Brookline, Newton, Longmeadow. And at the elementary level for ELA, we were above Cambridge, same as North Hampton, and below Brookline, Newton, Longmeadow.
Thank you, Michael. Before we have questions, would you prefer to have questions and comments in the community? Now you want to segue into principals?
I, I would like to hear from principals, because they're going to give more narrative to this, and then if people have questions.
Sure.
Yeah, it was just a one small, it wasn't really a content question, so much as, so in preparing for this, I think I did what maybe a lot of people would do, is I went to the DESU website and printed out stuff. So not having this presentation about growth, you know, I got stuff that's more snapshot-y.
Right.
So is it correct to assume that this fantastic analysis is not really publicly available on the DESU website, that actually someone has to crunch numbers and do this?
Yeah, so, so the nice thing about, just very briefly, the nice thing is they've created a data warehouse that's much more functional. It used to take for one report to run lots and lots of time, and now it's more limited in scope, but it runs really fast, so I'm able to pull these, like, remember that chart with all those dots, right? I can do that for any comparison group, any district in Massachusetts. So really, I mean, it takes a fair amount of time, but it's, it's pretty easy. So I just click on, you know, all the districts in Massachusetts are listed, I click on check tech, checkboxes, and I get bubbles, right?
I mean, the reason I raise it, I think, is partly for us, but also, I think, for the public, that if what we're saying is that this growth model is actually quite informative as a way to look at this stuff, that you can't go looking for it, and therefore, there's a lack of available data to do it.
That's why we have someone like Mike who does that.
Right.
Yeah, but you're, you're spot on, yeah.
In order not to interrupt the flow of principals, I'd like to request that members of the committee that you write down your questions, comments, and then we'll save them to the end, but go through the entire group of principals, give them an opportunity to make their presentations. So Michael, why don't you, you know, the sequence we're going to go with?
I do, so the high schools.
Up first.
And we have Diane, Mickey, and Mark here.
So we have three to five minutes, so this is, I don't know if it's like 28,000 feet, 30,000 feet, but we're, we're pretty high. So I think the first thing that I, that I want to mention is, and this is one of the things that got lost in translation in the paper, was that on the, for growth and achievement, we're at level two, for participation, we're under appeal right now, because there were some kids that were miscoded. So if you remember the, the slide that had the colored bars, one of the features of level three was less than 90% in terms of participation, right? And so we're, we're just kind of hanging, in fact, in fact, there was an email late in the day from the state, looking for some additional information before they, before they finally rule on whether or not we're solidly level two, or will be consigned to level three as a result of participation. So the other thing I, I want to say is that I'm probably a good lay test audience for how the accountability model has evolved. The distinction between growth and achievement is not one that's completely settled in my head yet, right? And so I, when the, when the red marks come up in the column, as opposed to the luminous and green ones, there's a part of me that just kind of wobbles for a second, because I can't quite get it to settle in my head that it, it's overall okay. And so I just, I just, in the interest of trying to keep this in front of lay people, non-statistically people, I think it's something we're going to have to keep coming back with to kind of stabilize the public understanding of, of the distinction. And I want to be clear that I do think it's an improvement that we're talking about growth and not something about achievement, right? Conceptually, that's an advancement, right? But in terms of raising our collective facility to, to move back and forth between those two measures, I still think, speaking personally, that's in front of me, and I assume a lot of the people would be in the same, in the same boat. So there's just one thing that I want to note on that front. So if you look at, if you look at our ELA scores over the last two years, 93% of the kids in the high school have either been advanced or proficient. I'm going to say that again, for the last two years, 93% of the kids in the high school have been either advanced or proficient. More interestingly, this year, no one failed, right? There's a big zero right down there. So everybody's in the game, and if we fast forward two years, we know that everybody graduates and everybody else comes up to speed. And yet, when you look at our ELA scores on the screen, they didn't come up in luminous and green, the growth scores, they came up in, I forget what the exact number was, but it, but it was in red. And so I use that as an illustration, just to, to kind of highlight the fact that we're going to have to hang in here to kind of get, get all that ironed out, because it doesn't sit cleanly in my head. So, so with those as two introductory things, what I really hoped was, what an ideal framework was, that we could do the school improvement plans on the same night that we did MCAS, because what, and I think this is probably true for a lot of other principals, the things that you'll hear tonight kind of foreshadow the conversation that's coming on the ninth, right? So this is again, to use Mike's airline imagery, we're flying fairly high, and we just want to highlight a few things. So I know we were with you last year, and talked several times about the work over the last two years around the ask, could they answer two questions? Do we know what kids need to know and be able to do? And can we identify where kids have faltered in real time? So if you take those basic principles and apply them to the NCAS conversation, it's a fairly clean, linear connection, because the question around raising MCAS scores is, do we know who's struggling? So I just quickly recapped a lot of what we've talked about over the last two years to, to make it clear that while that certainly generalizes to the entire project in the high school, and not simply raising, around the issue of raising MCAS scores, it is, it is a strategy that doubles as something that would, that would help us continue to raise, to raise our scores. I think the real story, though, is for us, is the logical extension of knowing what we want kids to be, knowing, or clarifying what we want kids to know and be able to do, and being able to identify real-time struggle, is the work that we've identified for, for this year, which is again, something we'll go into much more depth in, in two weeks. But the thing that I want to highlight is that there's a level of intervention and support that with Mickey and Diane's help, and the, and the department heads we've put in place, that go to the question, can we know with a high degree of specificity who's struggling and when, and can we target, target interventions and support in real time? So I want to talk to you more about the math intervention course that Mickey and Jay Moody have developed and put online and scheduled any number of ninth graders in who's profile as eighth graders, demonstrated as a result of MAP and MCAS, as well as grades in class and teacher recommendations, that these are kids who need attention now, we're not waiting for them to, to falter either in the second trimester, third trimester, or later on in their high school career. Similarly, on the ELA front, we've tried to, with Diane's help and Danny Marr, tried to overhaul the individualized reading course. So we've accessed UMassHelp, which somebody, I think you'll hear more from Ron in a couple of weeks about the, the ways in which UMass is helping us on this front, but the intent is to target kids who's, again, patterned as a result of MCAS in the middle school, as a result of their MCAS, have arrived at high school with ability to comprehend complex texts that's not equal to the high school level, to high school level work. So, so that's another big feature of how it is, that both in a way that's MCAS-specific and more generally, helps the larger academic project of the high school. And the third piece, and I hope in two weeks Diane will be able to talk about this at greater depth, we've tried to rethink how we do academics, academic support, is that a phrase that means something to people? The academic support class, right? So for kids who have IEPs, they have one period in the day. And generally, it, it has trafficked under the name of academic support, which was, as it sounds, fairly generalized, and what we've tried to do is to begin the transition to having those students, and that's, and Mike alluded to that in his, his, his summary points, that the subgroup that's still most, that we're still most challenged in terms of our ability to help our kids with disabilities. And so this is one feature of our attempt to really kind of hone in and maximize all the instructional time available in the, in the calendar, or in the, in the LA schedule[1719.58] time available in the calendar or in the ELA schedule in a targeted way for kids who are in particular need of it. So it's the right side of the column that I think is the, or the highlights, and again, on the ninth, I'd like to come back and talk to you about that more. Okay, thanks.
When the middle school's coming up, I just want to make a mention, too, again, the school committee voted to add intervention staff to the high school this year with your support. That's where you're seeing this right-hand column become a reality for the high school.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, Betsy.
I'm very excited to tell you about some of the work we're doing at the middle school, and you are going to hear the same story, okay? This is the story. How do we target the kids who, you know, how do we understand where kids are, the skills that they have deficits in? Then how do we design instruction using the right curriculum, the right staff, the right intensity and duration of that intervention? And then how do we progress monitor to make sure that what we're doing is the right thing to be doing for those kids? So that's the dance. That's the cycle we're in. You're going to hear it over and over from all of us tonight and throughout the next number of years in our practice. So we were very pleased with our growth in math, and math was the area in the middle school where we really spent a lot of time looking at our interventions in the past year. We have more systematic targeted interventions over the past year. We were using our academic study class, which is presented by our math teachers, to seventh-grade math students, eighth-grade math students, even algebra students partake in academic study to get them the help they need at the level of math that they're performing on. We also use for after-school VELA, which is the program that you're all familiar with. There was a second aspect of our intervention, and this came from Ron Ferguson, and this is different. So when we talked to Ron last year, he said, guess what, you guys? I've looked at all this data from hundreds of schools, tried to figure all this out, and there's a couple of very high-performing schools in the state. And one of the features that a lot of those folks had is they had an intervention coordinator. We said, we're getting ourselves one of those. If that's going to work for them, it's going to work for us, and we feel like it really is. We have this guy, Joel Singley, who is our intervention coordinator. So this is his job. He keeps all of the data around math for all of our kids. One guy, right? Then he takes all of our interventions. He's keeping track of those interventions. He's figuring out what we're doing. He's monitoring those. And then he keeps all of our progress monitoring data. Okay, there's one guy, got the whole picture. And that allows us to be very responsive to the kids' changes. If they're making changes, let's keep going. If they're stuck, let's try something different. Okay, so that's been a very effective piece for us. Our next step, which you're going to hear about in a couple of weeks, we were already implementing this year. We found that a couple of kids or a number of kids, we felt like our academic study two days a week, our VELA after-school, wasn't the right intensity and duration for some kids. So we wanted to give them more. So we developed a class this year. It is a class that meets four days a week, targeted intervention. We chose Math Navigators as our curriculum after extensive review of curriculum last spring. So that's where we are. So, big, huge area. We really focused on math. We got the kind of growth we were excited to see this year. So we look at our growth in ELA. We hadn't targeted ELA in the same way. We feel like we've learned a ton about math, and we want to kind of go ahead and do those same processes this year. So when you see our SIP, that's what you're going to see. We want to enter, we want to evaluate our intervention model. We want to look at what kind of intervention tools that are available and apply what we've learned in math to ELA. Now, there's one other step, and this is where it's also different, and this is where Ron Ferguson has also really been helpful for us. Ron talked about, well, first of all, math. Math, you do math. It's an isolated, not a terribly isolated skill, but it's not something you're necessarily doing across the curriculum. When we're talking about ELA, reading comprehension, we're talking about writing, we have this opportunity to be practicing those skills and learning those skills and perfecting those skills throughout the curriculum. So we have to leverage that opportunity by really making sure that we're doing our very best for kids all day long. So we're instituting a Writing Across the Curriculum program this year. What that consists of is we are bringing on a facilitator who's going to work with our four core classes, or our four core departments, social studies, science, English, and math. The facilitator is going to work with each department on a project, on a writing project. And they're going to look at what are the best instructional practices and the best strategies that we want to teach kids. They're going to look at, then the teachers are going to implement that instruction. We're going to get the results back. We're going to analyze the results, and we're going to work on giving kids really good feedback all the way across the board. So those are the new things in English. I need to mention this. My science teachers will kill me if I don't mention this. You saw no science data, right? This is a scoop. It once again confirms this thing that we, this model that we're using. So last year, in 2011, 45% of our eighth graders were proficient or advanced in science. In this past year, 67% were proficient or advanced. That's like, that's a massive change. So of course, you know, go up that ladder of inference, what do we say? Why? Right? So our science teachers did the exact same thing we're talking about in math and English. They said, let's give the kids pre-test. Let's look at where they've got this information, where they don't, based upon the strands that they're going to be tested on. They identified areas of need. They found a tool called Ziggy Learning, okay? And Ziggy Learning is a series of tutorials that are on the computer. Kids can watch those tutorials. They can solidify some of their knowledge. And you've got to remember, science is taught over a whole bunch of years. And so those kids have to remember a lot of information as they're being tested. So they found that to be extraordinarily helpful, among all the other great instruction they do. But they're attributing some of that success to that intervention. And one last piece you're going to hear about. This is our school-wide commitment. So we have four core subjects that I told you about, right? Really, really important for the future of our kids. What we understand is the class time that kids in the middle school spend on those four core subjects is less than the time they spend in elementary school and less than the time they spend in high school. We love our rich, broad middle school curriculum, and it's really, really valuable, and it's really, really important. But we are feeling that the demands that are placed on students in those four core subjects may not be getting the time that they need. So our commitment to our kids this year and to one another is to try to analyze that problem and see if there's some solutions that we can go after. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Elementary. What, are you going to stand up here for yourself?
We're a team.
Yes, you are a team. Monica, come on up in the front row, my friend. Sit next to Derek. Do you want to take the microphone down?
So I think there are a lot of different aspects to the MCAS results that we want to talk about, just in the elementary level. So one thing is that we, where you, you all have placed your resources for all of us. So elementary coaches last year were instrumental part of our, the fabric of our learning communities. So we had math coaches. We also had ELA coaches at the time. This year, we have reading specialists. And I think what they did, which will tie in, I don't want to talk too much because I don't want to take away from what everyone else is going to say, because I think what they did is also, besides work with people on best practices, on instruction, problem solving with teachers, they really took the leadership role and continue to this day with the intervention model that you'll hear more about from my colleagues. They also looked at differentiation. So I do have to say, after listening to Mike's eloquent presentation about the growth model, I had a little aha moment, and I said, oh, wait a minute. We did a lot of work last year, particularly in math, on differentiation. I think our community felt and principals agreed that kids who have a lot of aptitude in math, they also need challenges. And I was, as Mike was talking, I was multitasking and looking at my MCAS results and seeing, well, there were kids in the advanced category who showed a high-growth percentile. And I think that's a reflection of some of the work that the coaches did around differentiation in math. Does that fit in? It was just like this aha moment that I understood this.
Glad you learned something today.
I did, I did. And so I think also, similarly, with our kids in needs improvement or warning, just having them grow because of the work and the problem solving, I think that the coaches were doing. So we're looking forward to it. I feel like, if I might add, that where last year was just the beginning of this kind of work, and I do feel like the coaches will continue to dig deeper into what they can be doing.
And so as a district, we've been looking at the response to intervention model, the tiered approach to instruction. And I have to say that this has really made an impact on what we do in our buildings, as far as we have a very involved intervention staff for math and ELA. And so what we've done is built in time for teacher collaboration, which has been important. And we also implemented the enhancement block. And if you look here at this tier model, oh, awesome. Yeah, it can go back and forth, because one is academic and one is behavioral. So everyone is at tier one. All our kiddos are. But then if we notice that if they're struggling, that's when we implement a tier-two type approach. So students may be pulled out for support. Also, different types of curriculum may be used as well. And if they continue to struggle, then interventions are intensified. So we're doing this district-wide, from high school, middle school, and at our elementary schools. And I think at Fort River, it has really been beneficial for us because we're constantly talking about student data and making adjustments.
I don't see so. So if you don't mind me just saying this quickly, one of the things I like most in life is history. I love to study history and try and understand history. So one of the things that I've been good fortune is that I've worked, this is my 16th or 17th year in Amherst, felt very lucky to have worked here. So for me, the history piece is this. If we go back to the mid-'90s, and Nick's probably got a better understanding of this than I do, and probably some folks in the audience who've been here a while, a lot of well-intentioned, highly qualified, well-trained staff working in our district, absolutely top-notch. The challenges that we faced is that we would meet occasionally in teams, and I say occasionally, every two weeks as teams, and we're trying to figure, you know, how are we going to help the students who really need help? And our interventions would take place, but they were weak because there was no system in place. And really, there wasn't a great organization in place in terms of how it was all going to work. And invariably, what happened, and perhaps, you know, my memory is a little weak, but my memory is that students weren't getting what they needed. And one of the default positions you would often take is you say, you know what, we don't know what to do. Teachers are left alone to really figure this themselves. And there was probably more IEP referrals than there need to be. That was something, it's my opinion, but I'm sure it was true. Things have changed, and, you know, I think Lawrence O'Brien, Lawrence said something really clever earlier when he was talking about, you know, the superintendent rubric. And we're talking here about the superintendent providing administrators and administrator teams with the resources and support to disaggregate assessment data and assist in identifying students who need additional support. So that's what's happened in the last couple of years that's been critical. That's different than go back in history. So we get this highly skilled, well-trained group of staff. They're able to use these research-based curriculums for their interventions. We're continually looking at the data and trying to make sense of the data in terms of what kids need. The important piece here is real-time intervention. So I can tell you, all of the schools, today is, what, September 24th, we've already met in teams in our schools this year already. September 17th, I know in our school, for example, we started intervention work with students. Today, I think we've got somewhere around, you know, maybe 30 students getting math support, probably 60-plus students getting support during enhancement other times for language arts. So we're not waiting until October, November, December and saying, okay, are we going to get this done? Are we going to get this done? We're going to get it done right now. And so some of those students are getting help. They may get help for six, seven, eight weeks. It may be less, it may be more. We're not waiting around because it's too important. The other piece I would say, and I was doing some of this work this morning, Annie and I were meeting with Mike and Ian Steff, who's the math, you know...
Math, science.
Math, science. So even the systems that we have in place right now, I think they're pretty darn good, but we're not happy with what we have completely. So we're always meeting. This morning, we're meeting, we're looking at schedules. We're looking at our schedule. We're looking at how can we best use our staff and our people so that we can get even better at what we're doing. Because we're not sitting back and saying, okay, we've made it to the mountaintop and we've got this. We think there's more work to be done, and we're going to continue to review, critique our own work so that we can get better and better.
So another one of the major strategies that we're using in the elementary schools to ensure our students' success is adopting PBIS and Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports to help our school communities come together around shared values. And what we believe that this does for our students is it really explicitly teaches them the self-regulation skills that they need to be successful in school, which really is the foundation for academic success. And so PBIS looks different in all of the elementary schools, but we all are adopting this, these shared values that we believe in in our schools. And what we see is that our students really respond to the consistency throughout, from the staff and faculty throughout the school. And that helps them, it reduces their stress with trying to navigate all the multiple authority figures that exist in the school.
Good evening. I'm glad you came, Trevor, because I thought I was going to have to redo this next Thursday, and I was, Mike, are you busy? So I just want to say that last year is the first year that we did put an identified enhancement block in place in Palomaz in the Amherst schools. And this was the first time that teachers really had a designated time in which they could really work with students, either one-on-one and in small groups. We began to put into place evidence-based interventions. But we are still continuing to build this model. And Palomaz is a small school, and it's true the demographics are somewhat different, but when I looked at the scores, almost one-third of our students are designated high needs out of the 70-odd students that did take MCAS. One of the challenges that we experienced at Palomaz School is resources are somewhat different and somewhat tighter. So we don't have coaches. We don't have the intervention staff just to do ELA, just to do the math. And so we have had to become creative. And so what my special ed service providers also serve as intervention. And this year, I reconfigured the model so that, for example, at grades K-1 and 2, the enhancement block is all at the same time. So that enables seven professional status teachers, or seven professional staff, and four peer professionals to service approximately close to 57 students. So when you look at that, that's almost a four-to-one ratio. So we're really trying to really maximize our resources, look at data really carefully. We'll be actually working with my staff tomorrow to look at some of this MCAS data. And one thing that hasn't been mentioned yet is that all the teachers will be writing student learning goals, and actually looking at some of this data to help them look ahead to the year and what they need to put in place to possibly change instruction or practices and the other interventions they can put into place. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's a preview to what's going to happen on the district improvement plans, school improvement plans, talking a little bit about what we see as some contributing factors to the growth that we viewed over this past year, and really looking forward to what will be improved growth and continued growth over the next so many years. So thank you all.
Yes, thank you very, very much. Michael, you have anything to add? Before we move on, if, what I'd like the committee to think through is, first of all, let's continue to gather information. Do we have questions that we would like to ask to either Maria and/or any of the principals? Please direct your questions to specific individuals. And then when we finish with that round of questions, perhaps we can then look at comments, remarks on the part of the members of the committee. So questions for people who have been presented. Trevor?
Your name, sir?
Me?
Yes.
Derek Chee.
Mr. Chee.
Oh, yeah.
You were mentioning what a laudable goal it was to organize these interventions. Just on a practical level, how long do the interventions last, and is that up to the teacher or the team? How do we decide when the goals are met? And if a student, and I understand these interventions are happening at the same time as the normal classes, as math or English or whatever the intervention is, it's not that they are taken out of their regular class and do instead intervention. Intervention is happening alongside. My question is practically, does that intervention last a whole semester or trimester, or does that intervention last when certain goals are met, and who decides that?
Should have drank my tea. So, you know, so...
I ask you because you have...
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
...the history and what you've seen and how it's changing.
Absolutely. So again, I think it's a good question, because I think, I can only look at last year, for example, in our school. And we, what we did is we met in teams probably four times a year. And initially, our interventions were eight-week blocks. And when I say eight weeks, I think sometimes there was maybe some seven-week blocks, but we certainly made sure that every seven or eight weeks, we met as teams. And when I say teams, to paint the picture, what may happen is you may get a group of, let's say, fourth-grade teachers in a room. And last year, I was the assistant principal at Cocker Farms, so last year, myself, Mike, group of fourth-grade teachers, the math coach, and then the intervention, language arts specialist. And we would meet, we would look at the data, we would figure out, you know, are kids making improvements? Are kids looking like they've jumped ahead over this quick period of time? Are kids looking like they've jumped ahead over this quick period of time? And again, we're talking about intervention where you're talking thirty minutes, five days a week for an eight-week period. Percentage-wise, who makes the decision? The group of people who are in that room, the team would make informed decisions in terms of what's the best way in terms of kids to whether stay or leave the intervention. I couldn't give you the numbers off the top of my head, but certainly there was a good percentage of kids who would remain in the intervention process. There were certainly some kids who, and graduated, I might not know the right word, but certainly would no longer need the intervention. We certainly had some students who had dual needs, perhaps who would need some support in language arts initially, and then perhaps after a six- or eight-week period, say, you know what? Made some good growth, looking like you've got some things in place, you've got some confidence. You're not going to have to come out and get support, but people are going to come into the class continually support you. Now it's time to kick in with the mathematics. So in short, it can continue as long as it needs to continue. I think we're well-staffed at this point. We could always do more, but I think we're in good shape that way. The team makes the decisions. And again, I think what we're trying to use is data information. We're not sort of sitting there going, you know what, I like Johnny, I love to work with him, he needs to stay with me. That's the way it worked in the past, in my opinion. You know, there was all sorts of ways that we just, we didn't make it work properly. So again, the team, and last year, I had some kids who worked for the whole year with the intervention folks, made solid growth. We don't see them this year.
So that data is based on the work they're doing with the team of interventions? In other words, the intervention team is giving them work? And if they can meet certain proficiencies, they may.
Sure.
It's not the.
Yeah, so for one.
What they're doing in a normal class.
Right, so for, well, I mean, we're going to look at that also because I think when you come and we're deciding who needs the help, you're looking at things, you know, the map testing you look at, you may look at the MCAS scores, you may look at some of the reading scores from class, you may actually look at the performance in the classroom. So we're looking at all factors. And my memory serves me, we do map testing probably three times a year. I think our first round of map testing is coming up pretty soon. So we use that tool to be able to help us figure out maybe what kids need. We'll use that tool maybe, what, ten, every ten weeks or so? So that's a tool that will help us figure out whether kids need to stay or go.
If I could also add on to that, you know, some of the tools, the evidence-based interventions that we're using have a mechanism built in where there's evidence, there's progress monitoring tools within so that you're having to measure as you're going along. So you're able to see every couple of weeks how this child is doing. So there's multiple measures to kind of look at growth and progress of kids.
And that's separate from your classroom.
Yes.
And I just want to come back to a point that was raised earlier, which is around multiple measures. And certainly, one of the things that we're looking at is, are there data systems that can help us take a look at multiple measures? So we can take into account map, local assessments that people give, like an end-of-unit test, like say, in math in the classroom. Because our goal is where kids don't need us anymore, right? That they can be independent in the classroom. So some kids will do really well in a small group, they get back into the big group, and we're not seeing it, you know, those skills and competencies internalized. We want to make sure, that's our goal, right? We want to give kids the skills and competencies they need to be successful in the generalized classroom.
Just a reminder before we go on, a question, then we'll give you a follow-up. And then, you know, want to give everyone a chance to ask a question, then we'll come back if you have a second question. Shabazz?
Mike, my question is for you.
Sure.
I found elements of the discussion relative to what you learned with the achievement gap initiative. Professor Ferguson, interesting and enlightening, some parts a little bit obfuscated or unclear for me. Particularly, you were giving us some subgroup analysis just to sort of look at how we can look at the data and then with this idea of this growth model, what it can tell us. And in particular, you did your little chart, and it looked at, you were picking up on a challenge from Professor Ferguson to not only look at the, whatever subgroup you're analyzing, your case was African-Americans, but to also look at against their past performance, but also to look at it against the white norm. And I think if I saw correctly, you were looking at it against the statewide norm. Does his, does this model call for looking at it against the statewide norm or against the local community white norm?
Sure, so, so these are quotes from him. This isn't my language. I took out, that's not harm center, they're mostly quotes. Some things I just reduced the math in here because he's an economist. So if you look at that bottom one, so his recommendation is that the school district level progress concerning achievement gap should be measured in relation to state-level benchmarks, not in ways that measure groups within a district against one another.
And why is that?
So his perspective is twofold. One is that when we're comparing achievement of kids, which, it's a small, Amherst's a small town, and we really want to compare kids to as large a group as possible because they're not really competing against Amherst's kids. They're competing against kids all over the state and really a wider group. His other perspective is the incentives that when you're comparing growth of students within the same district, it leads to incentives that aren't helpful for the community.
Hitting groups against each other.
Right, so if one group goes down, that makes another group look better. But we don't want to ever hope that some groups go down within our district. We want all groups to go up. And some groups candidly need to go up faster than others because our achievement is not consistent across subgroups. Right.
Go ahead, follow-up? Sure? Anyone else with a question? Rick?
I had three things. First one for Mike. I think this is obvious, but I just want to make sure. If you're looking at growth.
Yeah.
And your growth as a district is above fifty percent, you're going to, your achievement's going to grow versus the state.
Exactly.
Okay.
And that's one of the critiques of this model, is that it's all relative to states. So if the state in general improves its achievement, then everybody's got to, you know, so some people like that element, some people don't, as opposed to another way to look at growth.
Okay.
Then, this was a great presentation. I'd love for you to think with Maria about creating some kind of standard report that we receive every year that would pick the highlights and be no longer than three pages or something. It would just put down some of these things you stated, like the comparisons with districts, whatever else you think should be on it. And, you know, I hope that like five years from now, we're looking at the same standard report. And then finally, I just think, I just get the feeling that the management of the school system is just so much better with all of this looking at data. And, you know, I think sometimes the school system gets criticized for having too much administration. But I would just say that a big chunk of administration is management. It's not, you know, useless administration. And I think I'm just feeling better than ever about, you know, the way that the schools are being managed with data and really looking at what works, what doesn't work, and measuring that, so it's great.
Any questions for principals or Michael or Maria on MCAS before we give everyone a chance to make a final comment? Any questions at all? Michael, may I start with you? Final comment? Yes, no?
Yes. I have a few quick points. Just the presentation was amazingly thoughtful and comprehensive, so thank you. That's tough stuff, and you communicated it well. And I would agree with what Mark said. I think it seems like the growth perspective has definitely stepped in the right direction. I'm still, you know, there's a place for the MCAS stuff. I've never been enamored with it, but this is moving in a better direction. Looking at the snapshot stuff, there's clearly some subgroups that, you know, need attention that jumped out at me. Latinos and Hispanics in particular were one that really jumped out. So at some point, it'd be helpful to sort of take this perspective and really dive into the ones that, and the flat things jump out. And then two that are related. Just to reiterate your very first point, this is just one data point, and there's lots of riches in education. And so getting to the middle school stuff, that, you know, it is hard to sort of get the four core topics, but there's all the other things that are really valuable. And so although we spent a ton of time on this and it's helpful, just reminding this group, which doesn't mean they're reminding that, you know, at least one of us really, you know, I want to articulate that there's a breadth of stuff about education. And the fun part and the art and all the stuff that we do here is really valuable.
Thank you, Michael.
Trent?
I appreciated the part of your presentation I heard too, and I want to echo the comments. There's a lot of information and statistics are one of those things that are tools that everybody uses, but people can use them differently. So somebody can look at the method and describe whatever problem they'd like to ascribe to it. So I want to just point that out. And keep in mind, and again, like you said, every, we don't need to emphasize this, we can't emphasize this enough. This is data to try to use as a tool to show how well our schools are doing. But the proof is always in the pudding in terms of how qualified and how experienced our children, all of them come out with at the end. So this is, like, I think the way you described is looking at this from thirty thousand feet. From on the ground, this should mean that every child, if we want to use these growth models, it means that if you grew from this to this, wherever you ended up growing was that enough? That you were proficient, positive and productive member of society that can go out and do what we expect productive members of society to do. So although I appreciate the statistics and I know it's very necessary and needed, ultimately, there should, we should adopt other measures including these to be able to judge our schools, and that's what I want to mention.
Thank you, Trevor.
Margaret?
So, Michael, thank you very much for clarifying something that it's going to take me a little while to get my head around. And, but what I really want to say is I want to thank all the administrators and all your faculty and all the staff you're doing because I'm very impressed with your responsiveness. Sometimes schools are big bureaucracies, and they really don't respond very well to their students' needs. But I don't have that fear after tonight, and I'm really looking forward to future presentations as well.
Zoe?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything that they've said. Like, it's great that you guys are doing this, great presentation. Like, I know I didn't know too much about it, but after hearing what you guys have said, like, it's really kind of enlightening for me as a student to think of how supportive you all are. And I know that every student wants to feel supported. So this is just great to see. And yeah, there are definitely still things that we have to work on, but I think that as a whole, we're moving in the right direction, so thank you.
Thank you, Zoe.
Shabazz?
Yes, so it is one data point, and there's certainly a lot more that we know. We want to look at and dig about our schools and see what's really going on. But to focus for an evening on this one data point for a little while, I think there are some other, there are some things that really jump out at us. And particularly when I look at the science and technology grade eight, overall, we have a sixty-six percent that are proficient or higher. But when we look at that area at our low-income subgroups, and this is not just 2012, 2012 is actually better than 2011, where we had only eighteen percent in advanced or proficient. We're thirty-five this year, so there is a little cause for that. But when we look at over the years, 2006, only thirteen percent proficient or higher. Nineteen in 2007, nine in 2008, zero proficient, only, well, ten advanced or proficient in '09. 2010, we had a great year, forty-five percent scored on that test, advanced, proficient or higher. But then in 2011, we fell back down to eighteen, and now this year at thirty-five. I don't know what is happening in that one particular test, but I think there is cause for some real, looking at that one data point to try to really ask some tough questions about what's happening to our students in that, on that particular test over time.
Thank you. Rick?
Yeah, I want to thank you, Mike, and I want to thank all the principals as well for a really comprehensive presentation and very complicated. I also looked at the DESE website and sort of like, oh my God. And I feel really excited about the growth in the MCAS. I think it reflects a lot of what has been happening in the schools. And if I think about, we'll stay in the analogy of the thirty thousand feet, I see the MCAS growth measures as sort of the thirty thousand feet. And what's so encouraging, or what makes me feel even better about our growth, because obviously there are areas where we still have a lot of work to do, is that in the principals' presentations, it's clear that the structure is in place and being worked on all the time to advance the growth. So it's not like, oh, this was a random year and we just had great growth. And it was sort of, we happened to, you know, teachers and students just happened to really mesh well that year. There is a solid structure in place, and that makes me feel really hopeful about those scores over the next five years. So thank you.
Thank you. Michael, I think one of the measures of success for something like this for me is when someone can take a topic or a subject that's incredibly complicated and consists of multiple pieces and layers and whatnot, and can communicate the essence of that in a very accessible, understandable fashion without talking down to their audience. And I think you succeeded in doing that this evening. Thank you very, very much. Very cogent, very clear, very informed. And I'm very confident as we move forward that you'll be able to provide reports of similar quality. Really outstanding job. Thank you. My second comment is to the principals and administrators in the audience. I'm not particularly obsessed with numbers. I understand the importance of data. It's where we are today in the 21st century. And I understand its importance to contribute to analysis and evaluation of instructional practices. But when I sift through all of these numbers, the one number that comes out loud and clear to me is a number that hasn't been mentioned this evening, and that's our dropout rate. I think that for as long as our dropout rate remains as low as it is, and it's very, very low, and I commend you for that, I think that means that we have, we're going to continue to have youngsters of all levels of abilities and aptitudes to be able to work with. And as long as we have them to work with, I think you've demonstrated this evening as educational leaders, and I know your staff as quality class, people in the classroom, that we have an opportunity to see that they succeed. It's not going to be easy, and there are going to be times when people are going to look at the low numbers and maybe make those into an issue larger than they need to be or should be at the ignoring of the larger picture. But I think that dropout rate for me is just so important because it means we have these kids, and we're going to continue to have them to work with. And I'm very confident that as long as they're in your hands, they'll be in good hands. So thank you very much for being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just, one quick one is just to say again, thank you to everyone who needs to exit and go home and get ready for work tomorrow. I'd like to thank Mike for being an incredible teacher because what we saw tonight is him set up learning objectives for us and then actually helping us to achieve those, which is what teaching is all about. So we thank all of our teachers who do that every single day for our children, and thank Mike, who is the perfect person to be in the position he's in, and I'll thank myself for that one. And I want to say, you know, yes, we're showing the growth that we've put in place systems and structures over the past really year around intervention that's really paying off, and we are far from done. So we are celebrating because we've shown wonderful growth, and we are far from done. And that's okay because we're on the right path and we have the right people doing the work. So I thank you all very, very much, and I thank the committee for your support of helping us to do this work. Nothing's better.
Thank you, and good evening. I will entertain a motion at this point to approve gifts.
It is an Amherst gift?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, excuse me.
I will attain a motion.
Yikes.
A motion to.
Just one really quick comment. The science teachers at the high school wanted me to say that they're really proud of the MCAS, the tenth graders, because they scored ninety-one percent proficient.
Which is amazing.
Yeah, so they wanted me to say that.
Thank the teachers and the students for their hard work.
I'm sorry, Catherine, go ahead.
That's all right. Is there a motion to approve this gift?
I move to approve from various donors to the Lori Rabo String Scholarship Fund. Is it Rabo?
Yep.
Two hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second.
All those in favor? Great, thank you.
Thank you. Would like to point out the calendar, upcoming events, coming attractions for your viewing pleasure. October the ninth, well, excuse me, I'm sorry. October 4th is a Pelham meeting, but also for us collectively, October the 9th is a joint meeting, District Improvement and School Improvement Plan. So that's. Excuse me?
That one is.
That's it, oh, yes, thank you.
Yes, that meeting.
The October 9th meeting, by the way, because of the topics and the amount of discussion that both might involve, we're going to start the meeting at six o'clock here.
Here.
Six o'clock. Any other thoughts, comments, questions about the calendar? Any other thoughts, comments, questions about the calendar? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a comment.
Yes.
You're doing a wonderful job, Kip, at moving us straight forward, we had here an adjournment time of 9:40, and we look here, and it's 9:17. I commend you for how you keep us on task and move us forward. But I really want to challenge this process that was put in place regarding the, the discussion earlier around the superintendent evaluation process. I have problems in terms of email access to the ARPS until today, so this survey that was conducted, or call for a survey that was conducted three days ago, in between our meetings, I did not have access to. I did not have the ability to put forward a vote around these criterions, per Debbie Gould's survey. And so, in the middle, in the midst of my expressing myself on these points, for that process to then be invoked as a, the only basis in which one could respond to expressing one's point of view to the superintendent about this evaluation process, I think it shows a lack of flexibility, and if we're going to be moving forward as a school committee, and not kind of going backward into acrimony, and the difficulties that we all know from, from recent years, I think it's going to be very important to have that kind of flexibility on the ground, on your toes, still, while trying to keep to the imperative of driving us forward, that we can get out and have a motion for adjournment at 9:17, as opposed to 9:40, as it was put on, on the agenda.
Thank you, Shabazz. I appreciate your comments, and I respect them, and I respect your feeling of, your comments about not being involved and properly informed, that's certainly not a way that we want to conduct our business. I believe, and please correct me, anyone on the committee, if I'm incorrect in my recollection, but at the outset of our discussion, I outlined what the process was going to be, and I think that might have been, I would have hoped that that would have been appropriate time for you to raise the fact that you weren't involved in the process, as you so indicated. And then we certainly could have made changes in the process. I, I regret that that didn't happen. In the future, I would hope that perhaps we can look at those things in a timely, precise manner, but my apologies, I thought I had outlined the process. If I was mistaken, then I apologize for that as well. Yes, sir?
Again, this is not being responsive. You did outline a process. I'm raising to you that the process did not have to be adhered to at that point. You did not have to limit a school committee member who did not have access to put a response on this list, of which there were several responses, where only one, only one person voted for it, to not allow that, a school committee member, to be able to express their one point, a point that's not on this list, that had been conducted by the process that you outlined at the beginning, is to, is to have a lack of, of flexibility, that is, that is very problematic. So it's not to apologize, because you were clear, you laid out a process, and I'm sure, and yet you knew that that process wasn't complete, because there were seven responders, it wasn't everyone. So to not allow someone to express their point of view, that wasn't going to delay us from adjourning at 9:40, because of some process, is an act of disenfranchisement. And, and you don't want to do that going forward, if we're going to have a successful school committee.
And I, and I can assure you that I'll make every effort in the future to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Thank you.
And if I may, publicly, in all candor, I knew that there were people who hadn't responded, and the way I perceived that matter, I made a choice not to take the chance of embarrassing anyone who might not have been involved. And I thought that was a greater need, a greater priority. If I made a poor choice, so be it, but I, my, my thinking was, yeah, there were people who obviously didn't, weren't involved, I don't know who they were, to be honest about it, I still don't. But that was an intention, not wanting to embarrass anyone, and say, put them in a position where they might have to say, you know, I didn't do this. So I respect your saying, publicly, that you didn't do it, and I apologize for the manner in which you were caught short in not being able to do it, and we'll have to make every effort to make sure that that doesn't happen again. Michael?
Just to contribute a little, maybe productively, I think I have a, could have a personal history of questioning systems. So I think, my sense is that there's probably responsibility on both ends, in terms of this and that. You know, flexibility and responsiveness is definitely something, if we're going to work cooperatively, that's important. But I would also say that, you know, it's on all of us, at the right time, to sort of, when a process gets laid out, because I, you know, you're trying to figure out how to manage complex stuff and time, that it's on all of us to figure out at the beginning, to say, either this doesn't work, or can we tweak it, whatever, and so I think both are, both are realities that we should just embrace going forward.
Rick?
I hear what Shabazz is saying, and then when all this was happening, I thought, geez, should we kind of like, relax us a little bit? But I've sat in your chair, too, and so, you know, I know that, we didn't know that we were going to end early at the time we were doing that. So I've been at many meetings, and we were ending at 10:30 or 11:00, and know how that can go. So that was going on in my head. You know, I think we'll learn as we work together, and maybe that was a mistake this time, but I don't think it was a mistake, that was, anybody was trying to do something bad, it just was the way it was. And I respect the way that you're trying to keep rigid rules for this committee, because things can get out of control when you don't, so I, I hope that both Shabazz and Kip don't feel bad about this. I think that, you know, as I said, we'll, we'll learn and do better as we go on.
Shabazz?
I think Shabazz and Kip are both grown men, and I think, you know, we don't want to take this personal, or take this home, be upset with each other. I want to echo Shabazz, that Kip is doing an excellent job keeping us, you know, on task. And instead of belaboring whether or not this was intentional or unintentional, can't we just make a motion to see if we can reinfranchise, and, and add anything to this before the date of the ninth? I think there's plenty of time tonight for us to decide what could be added, and there's plenty of time for us to get it on the agenda for that meeting. If, if, if it's to the chairperson, you know, agreement, if that's all right.
Let me go to Catherine.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just take my share of the responsibility around the process this evening, because I knew that some people had not responded, and in discussing this with Kip, it was my feeling, given how difficult it was for me, and how much time it took, for me to choose my two elements, that I felt like, well, that the people who had not had the opportunity to do it, were not going to have time to reflect on all of the elements, and decide which two they thought were the most important in the, in the structure of the meeting tonight. So Kip and I did talk about it ahead of time, and...
You know, I'm really, for me, if people have priorities, if Shabazz would like to email me his direct priorities, absolutely, it'd be considered within my district improvement plan and the goals, because I want the real feedback, I want the feedback from the committee, because it will help me to do my job. So please know that, even though it wasn't fully discussed, I would be happy to have that input. And if there were other people who did not give their input, you know, who are not here tonight, it's really fine. I mean, I think this is just, the discussion's helpful for me, but also to, to receive those points after the fact is fine.
It's really fine, makes it all better.
Yeah, it works for me. And it's really to help me guide my work, so I'm very comfortable with taking that feedback.
Michael?
Yeah, I was, what I'm guessing I'm hearing is, there's two options right now, you know, we could take five minutes if Shabazz wanted to share stuff, if that was a good process, or we could adjourn and do it outside of this meeting, either one. I don't know if you have a preference, or if you have a preference.
Anything that I think genuinely, and respectfully, would help restore Shabazz's faith in the process, and in the system, and a genuine feeling of disenfranchisement, I would support, whether it's tonight, or tomorrow morning. If he feels comfortable in expressing himself at this point in time, I see no reason why he should be prevented from doing so.
So I have one B3, is where we started, so...
And, and I can send you more on that. Let me say this, that I've been looking at the superintendent evaluation stuff, I looked at, started looking at this kind of stuff over the summer. I was looking at it when I was trying to schedule myself to go for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees meetings. And, and so, the, the issue is that with, sometimes, in between our meetings, if a survey, and I can understand if it was designed to try to prompt us to all look at the 42 elements, and to all come in with some considered judgment to lay out, I can, I can hear that. But again, when you have this kind of scatter of one response, one response, one response, it would seem it doesn't really matter, you know, you know, if someone else has a response that's not on such a list, when everybody had such widely different things, the only one, that had three, there was only one that had three responses out of, out of the seven responders. So that's where I'm getting it. But I'll, I'll send more on it, you, you have the particular item, and I'll send a little more about my arguments of why I think that's, that's a very important one to hear, hear your, for you to look at as a rubric element.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Entertainer motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn, even though I can't wait.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, or adjourn? Thank you.
You have to close, you have to close Amherst, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We should go.
So we do adjourn Amherst. So Rick made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Excellent. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.